We got a roll call.
Bob Eisberger.
Here.
Marion Thoyer.
Here.
Diane Salter. Lisa Cavalluna. Deb Brady. John Chartier.
Here.
Kevin McCallum.
Here.
Dr. Alwah.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Kristi Spann.
Here.
And I got Diane, I've got a couple of people.
Okay, everybody rise for the Fudge of Allegiance. Fudge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You. Dr. Alwah, your superintendent's report.
I'm gonna be doing more speaking when we get to the educational report down the way, but I just want to pull up that we are two weeks away from the start of the school year and extremely excited about this school year. We have some exciting things for our students. Our buildings are well prepared, our staff is excited, especially at the elementary level. We have teachers all over the district getting things ready, getting their ducks in roll for the students. So we're very excited about this year. We're really looking forward to an outstanding year for the school year. I'll talk a bit more when we get to our education section here in just a few minutes to talk about some specific plans for this year. But I'd like to turn it over to Diane and just kind of talk about a donation we're getting from the Knights of Columbus.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, great, thank you. Well, we are so... We live in such a generous community and the Knights of Columbus have always been very generous to us and I have Gary Pitt here to present us with something and maybe even share how he raised the money and...
Okay, yeah, I'm Gary Pitt. I'm a member of the Knights of Columbus here at Ortonville, Father King Council. We have our little room down at St. Anne's Parish. And I've been chairman of the Tens Year Old Drive that we conduct every spring. Usually it's always the weekend before Easter. And all the donations we collect goes to the mentally impaired. And as far as I can remember, Brandon's Special Ed has always been one of our places that we donate our donations to. So I have a check here for $1,392. And I'm gonna give it over here to Diane. And I'm sure you guys can use it.
Thank you. And we'd like to present this to you for your council.
Okay.
Special recognition award for your generosity to the special education department here at Brandon Schools.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for all your help.
Well, thank you.
The donations that we get from Knights of Columbus helps to support some of the extra projects that we do. So we have students who've done like some of our peer-to-peer groups when they go bowling with general and special students go together. They've gone to those fun places where they bouncy places and they've gone to the Rainbow Cafe and some of the shopping activities that they do. So thank you so much. I really appreciate everything you guys do. Make sure you donate to the Tens Year Old Fund.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's always nice to hear from me getting a check.
Yes, I do.
Did I spell my name right?
Okay, moving forward, approval of our consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move the Brandon Board of Education to approve that consent agenda as presented. Support.
Okay, all those in favor of supporting or all those in favor of approving our consent agenda, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. Client's report, Diane.
Just had a couple of things. Odds is going well. They will be here in October to present them to the board. As we talked about in their study session, actually tonight is the budget amendment, which is assigning up to $2 million for capital projects. And then I want to tell you know, we did get our category two funding for technology approved already. Last year we didn't get it until March. So I'll be meeting with Thomas next month and probably come in October for the list of projects to get approved. So that's good news. We'll be able to continue to upgrade our technology infrastructure through the use of HEE rate. And then I was talking briefly about the community brochure, it's on there too though. We're putting it this weekend in the citizen. And then next week, Rachel and I and some of the vendors will be at the back to school Knights of Harvard in Oakwood. We really think these vendors are good. We tried to get a little bit of everything and we'll build on this for winter. We have a lot with the preschool and then the Aqua Club. They've really... They got the classes that really kind of pushed them to get everything formalized. So I really think our swim program will pick up this fall. We already have a pre-team and a junior team here, so there's enough kids for that. And three family nights that I know that that was one thing that the community really wanted was family swim nights. We have a Spanish vendor coming in from Ann Arbor to teach Spanish to kids after school at programs, the science programs. So we're gonna do our best to market this and hopefully we'll get a good participation rate and people have fun learning something new.
It looks excellent.
This is really fantastic. Really well done.
Yeah, I'm a football fan, so... Yeah, we're... Thank you. I think really these vendors are great. I mean, the sewing lady, they're gonna teach your kids how to sew. It's just a little bit of everything. So fingers crossed.
The football schedule on the back.
Yep.
This is just really well done.
Thank you. Yeah, this is fun, something different. Rachel was a great hire, Rachel Davis. I'm proud of her, part of the team. So we get four hours a day of getting everything on first. She's been a great addition to the office.
Excellent. Okay. Mr. Alwah.
So each year, we have a chance to talk about our educational plan for the year. I'm gonna... I'm just gonna talk, I'm not gonna use the microphone here. This is... We have a number of things that we're gonna talk about here today. Some things that we have set that the Board of Education has endorsed each of the last few years. And we're gonna talk a bit about some changes this year, some of the strategies that we're gonna use to move the district forward educationally. And then at that point, we'd really like any feedback, thoughts, as it relates to our educational plan from the Board of Education. So step one here is we're gonna talk about the district pillars. We set these during the 14-15 school year. We talked about three things that are kind of an umbrella, principles that we believe are essential to our district. Quality in all that we do, service to our family, and continued planning and implementation for the future. These are things that we've done each one of those years. These are guiding principles that we have used each year. Brandon 2025, during the 2014-15 school year, set a 10-year vision for the district. We're a few years into that now, but these are the top three goals of that committee. We're gonna be in the top 25% in all tested areas by 2020-25, or 2025. There's a number of goals related to preparing students for the next level, which has to do with college admission, college matriculation, those students that are not college-bound having appropriate pathways for those students. And then our last one, it's kind of an umbrella area, it's becoming an ever-increasing source of pride for the Brandon community. This includes athletics, external awards, all those things that are evidence of a district that is a high-quality district. So those are our Brandon 2025 goals coming into this school year. So as we started thinking about what do we need to do for the 17-18 school year, our conversation focused around four questions. These aren't new questions, but these are questions that are simple but are at the core of what we do. One, what constitutes success for our students, particularly academically? How do we know that our students are successful? How do we measure it? What are the instructional best practices that will lead us to that success? And then what do we do? What do we do or what will we do when students are not succeeding? They seem like simple questions, but these come back, this is the essence of what we need to do in this district to continue to move forward. So as we looked at this year in meetings with principals, directors, feedback, all kinds of different folks, looking at scores, data, all those things, we have two primary areas that we'd like to invest a lot of our effort in. One is about high-quality core instruction. What are the instructional practices that we need our teachers to do to deliver the highest level of results for our students? It's an umbrella topic, there's a lot of detail to that, but it's gonna look different at kindergarten than it's gonna look in 12th grade. But what are those core instructional techniques that are gonna put us in position to best educate our kids? And then the second big area, which is a huge area, and I think it's an underappreciated area, is intervention when students are not being their potential. What is it that we do? We do great things in many spots, but what do we do systematically when it comes to intervening for students? We find out somebody, let's say that a student was in the 92nd percentile in the NWA in September, and we come to January and they're in the 78th percentile. They're still in the top 25 in the country, but what are we doing for that student? Because obviously that student had a decline. What is it that we're doing for that student? We have students in the bottom, we have students at the top. They're all the same. If they're showing negative growth or if they're off track for success, we need to intervene. So what are we doing as a system? So that'll be a second big area that we'd like to propose as a primary educational target. So there's some specifics here as we get to what exactly are we going to be doing? How do we get there? One, we've talked about data for a long time in this district. Talked about data, how are we gonna use data? We need to use data. This year, it needs to be at the core of what we're doing. So specifically, we're talking about the goal of improving instruction and improving intervention for students. So using data, making it simple for teachers to use, making it easily accessible for teachers, making it really meaningful so that it's easy to use and easy to follow through with when we look at intervening or changing our instruction. Two is our assessment program, bolstering our assessment program. So it comes to that question, how do we measure success? We have to make sure that we have the right measures so that when a student is in a class, they're in sixth grade, how do we know that that student is successful? Are our measures telling us that a student is successful or not? Do we have those right measures in place? So we need to bolster that. We've had work that's been done around formative assessment, that's the assessments along the way, and that's an important piece to this puzzle as well. Third one here is identifying certain best practices that will result in the greatest growth in student achievement, the goal of aligning K-12. And I'll use it as an example, the writer's workshop that they're gonna do at K-5. There are specific strategies that are used that are based on research that are going to improve kids' writing the best. We need to make sure that our teachers are using those best practices to get the best results when it comes to student achievement. So that's the third area. Fourth, coming back to that idea of intervention, building off of current interventions. We have all kinds of things that are doing, we're doing in this district that are working really well, pulling it together in a solid K-12 system that we know exactly what we do when students are off track for success. We have pieces of this, but we want to systemically, we want to have a system-wide approach, K-12 for that intervention. And then the last one, the thing that pulls it all together, is how do we use that professional learning series with teachers to support all of those objectives? We have time with teachers after school, we have half-days, we have some full-day professional development. How do we use that time to achieve the goals that we've set as a district? These are other things that have been themes when we've been talking with teachers, some things that are really important practices that our teachers have been working on for the last several years. One is this concept of personal best. I've talked about this each year, but as a cross-country runner, you might have 30 kids on a team. Every kid can win that race because they're racing themselves, they're trying to beat their own personal best. So as a school system, we need every kid to try to get to their best effort. What is their best performance? Each kid is on their own journey, so we need to push everyone to be their personal best. That includes us, that includes the kids, anybody who's gonna be helping with education. Second one here that we've been talking about a lot over the last couple of years is high-quality use of instructional time and professional time. Not just the quantity of time, but the quality of time. We really have so much time to work with students, we need to make sure that we use it extremely well. Third one that we've been talking about is this idea of reflection. The difference between anybody who's successful and somebody who's mediocre or not successful is the amount of reflection that they give. The people that are really successful in life are people that look at themselves and they're always looking for the next best. They do well, they're like, I can tweak this and get even better. They're constantly looking to get better. And it becomes part of that culture. And that's gonna continue to be one of the things that we need to promote across this district. This right here, this no excuses attitude. In... It's my 22nd year in education and along the way I've heard every excuse in the book. At the end of the day, this is the only year that the kids are gonna be in whatever grade they're in. My daughter's gonna be in second grade this year, this is the only year she's gonna be in second grade. Sit. No excuses. Let's get the job done for Ann Alwah. Let's get the job done for all the kids in our district. We kind of have to have that attitude that we have an opportunity that we have to capture. No excuses. We could talk about funding, we could talk about rules and this and that, morale. No, we've got kids in our class who we have to take care of. We have to have that attitude, no excuses. Next one here, we've talked last year, we emphasized a lot about the role of parents. We need to continue to develop this aspect. The parent role is extremely important as we look at implementing and being successful as a district. So we need to continue to partner with parents in order to continue to move students forward. And then the last one, it's this collective attitude that we're all working on the same team to deliver better results for students, that we are a team, that we all have to commit and we have to commit to those improved results. Couple other things I'm just gonna throw out here really quickly. So how do we ensure this success? So great, we have a plan, how are we going to do it? We're gonna have monthly progress reports where we're gonna be talking about students that are off track for success. And we're gonna have a variety of things that monthly, I'm gonna be meeting with different levels on this concept. I'm recommending that we do a quarterly report to the board. What I'd like to do is I'd like to have our teams that I'm gonna talk about in just a second come and do a presentation to board next month about what the specific plans are by grade level. And then I'd like to just have a quick progress report to the board on our progress, one in November, one in January, one in April, and then at the end of the year where our teams come forward and report to the board on some of the things that are going well and the progress along the way. Distributed leadership model. We're elevating, we're kind of having teams that are gonna focus in on some of these areas. So we're gonna have a variety of people that are gonna be involved. For example, at K-5, Debbie Brower's gonna be working very closely with Coy Stewart and Andy Phillips as we look at delivering on these goals. Mike Tucker's gonna be working closely with Debbie Brower as we look at what's going to happen at the middle school level. Kristi, Dan, and the high school team are gonna be working at 912, delivering at that level. And all of us are going to work together, but each one of our teams is gonna have some individual responsibility focusing in on delivering at that specific grade level. And then finally, we have to continue to review our supports and interventions. Diane is a major player when it comes to interventions for special education students, so there's a lot of practices that we have with special education and the MTSS process that are good, but we have to do more. Can't be just about the bottom students. What do we do when any student is off track for success? What do we do when any student is showing negative growth? So we have a lot of work to do there as well. Some of our measures of success will be the NWA testing, M-Step, SAT. The thing that we really wanna emphasize this year in our plan is that we're looking, as opposed to school-wide growth, that's gonna be a piece of the puzzle, but we really wanna be obsessed as a district about the individual growth of students. Are students on track for success or off track for success? The individual student success is gonna be the key piece to this puzzle. And this is the thing that I just recommended, the progress report along the way. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the board for any questions, comments, concerns, suggestions that you have for our team.
One of the things that always comes up for me is, you know, every couple of years they change the testing, you know, it's kind of like the deck gets reshuffled here. How, is there any way... This isn't really answered for today, but it almost seems that we need to be able to do more real-time evaluation of our students as we go along because we wait, you know, for the tests and we wait a year and we get a result, then the second year we're looking to get the improvement on that and somebody comes out with a new test and then you start over again. It's very difficult to get any kind of a baseline over time to say, here's where we were, here's where we're at. How can we figure out a way that we can somehow internally benchmark so that we know that we're delivering what really needs to be delivered?
Two things on this. One, number one is our goal is not really to improve test scores. That's gonna be a byproduct of what our real goal is. If we do a great job improving writing, reading, mathematics across K-12, if we do that, no matter what test they put in front of us, our students should do really well. That's the first thing. Secondly, formative assessment is where 99% of the effort is going to be done at a district. These are things like NWA where it's gonna be two to three times a year. These are all kinds of tests that they do for reading assessment at the elementary level. This is where teachers have formative assessment in the classroom. This is at the high school. They have common assessments that are the same between teachers. I'm in Algebra I and you're in Algebra I teacher, we both have the same midterm, but we have data that gives us progress. Formative assessment is how we're gonna get to what you're talking about. And that's how you're gonna change instruction. Does that answer?
I'm trying to think how to bring to question. Realizing the tests are a strong measure or a measure that we have, a resource, a tool to measure how individual students are doing and how the school's doing, the district's doing collectively. When students are performing, you know, we have students performing at all levels, which makes the school district that much stronger, I think, because everybody learns from each other at different ways, different times, different levels. For the group that maybe is the data, the dashboard of data, for the group that shows they're performing in the, pick a high percentile, you know, 95th percentile, they're off the charts doing well. For that group, what's the measure for their challenge? What's the measure for their next step?
Right. So this is a challenge that the accelerated learning group has been looking at. The reality is there are very students that are, very few students that are in that 90th percentile and above. So there's room for growth for even our students that are top-level students.
Sure.
But the answer for those kids is not going to be state testing. They're beyond state testing.
That's my question.
Going beyond it. So we're really, depending on the age level, we're talking about the whole idea of recreation. This is the idea of taking an activity maybe that the classroom's doing and taking it to a completely different level. It's about, you know, maybe doing an alternate assignment that's far and above, you know, where, you know, the rest of the classes are at. This is one of the things that STEM is really trying to do where students can achieve at different levels. Through the project lead the way at that K-5, we'd be able to see some of that as well at that K-5 and eventually at 68. But it's really, it's not, testing is not going to be the thing that's going to define that top-tier student.
Right. And so that's making sure that we're, which I know we are, but in this very daunting task of making sure everybody's met where they are and moving to their own personal next best, sometimes I'm concerned that the test, the data created by the test results ends up leaving some behind because we're trying to improve the entire district and there's...
Well, what I would say to that, and I mentioned it in the example I said earlier, for me, one of the concerns that I have is exactly what you're talking about. If you look at some of our NWA data last year, we had students that were in, let's say the 75th percentile in September and they were in the 63rd in January. I'm really concerned about that. What is it that happened between here and here? That's a negative growth. That's why we're focusing not on those that are in the bottom quartiles, anybody who's off track for success and those showing negative growth. So we have to intervene, we have to find something. And it could be athlete, it could be, you know, I'm bored, so we have to find a way to light a fire on the student. But I am concerned about those students just the same as anybody else.
That's good stuff. There's only so much time in the day.
There is.
So much time to spend with yourself.
Right. Other thoughts, questions, anything for me or anybody on the team?
Well, you talk about a data plan. Is this something you're gonna be able to judge monthly, two months per child? You're talking about individual data plan for each child. Are parents gonna be able to see this? Are they gonna know when their kids are growing and they're declining? How's it gonna work?
So NWA is, the teams are working right now in specifics. And in September, those are some things that, it might look different in kindergarten than it's gonna look at 12th grade. But the data piece is the NWA is a big one. So it has great charts, great information available for parents and students. So in September, everybody's gonna take that NWA, okay? So they will take that, parents can see that, the district can see that. When we get to January, this is a nationally normed test that's actually a great indicator of success on the M-Step. If you score at this level, you're gonna be, you should be in really good shape on the M-Step. So it's aligned. The NWA is probably gonna be the biggest one that will be used, but there's more to it than just NWA. So when we talk about a data plan, we have the assessments in place, it's how we're gonna use those assessments to inform instruction and intervention for students. Other questions, comments? Me or anybody on the team? So coming back next month, what I'd like to do is I'd like to invite our teams and to talk about the specifics, to do about a five-minute presentation, then open up to the board to ask questions. Where they'll come forward and say, okay, this is what we're gonna do at the elementary level, here's some ideas, some strategies, this is the measures that we're going to have. And they're gonna fill in the blanks on some of the things that we're talking about because we're continuing to work on these. Ask those, we'll go level by level, they will start to do high school, they will do middle school, elementary school, and then you can ask anybody on the team those questions. And the thought here is that we're gonna have, this is, we're gonna have a whole team of people here ready to ask questions. When we're gonna have these reports, we have, if you have questions that's about middle school, that Mike, might be able, or Debbie, or Kristi, or Diane, we have all these people that are involved and are going to be responsible for our education plan. So we're all available to answer and to respond to the board. Does that work?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to see that split up, like you said, maybe there's the, call it the upper education part and then the lower education part, because I imagine they're gonna be very, very different in kind of the structure and the approaches. So I'd like to see it broken down at least like that. And I think it'd be good to hear it from, I'll say, those boots on the ground, you know, kind of how they see it, they hear it, because, you know, from your standpoint, right, you're the, your job, right, you're somewhat of the, you know, you're the CEO-slash-cheerleader here, but we've got, you know, other people there that are kind of boots on the ground and they're the ones really gonna be slugging it out every day. So I'd like to hear more from them. You've painted the vision. I wanna hear what, how they hear the implementation is gonna happen because that's where it's really gonna be successful or not, you know?
And then the report.
And that's no disrespect against what you're saying whatsoever.
I'm recommending it. That's why I'm recommending.
Yeah, because that's what I think's been important to me, because I think it sounds good and I like the idea of how we're breaking it down, structuring it, you know? I just wanna hear from those that have to actually do it, you know, how they think, they see.
How to agree.
And hopefully we're gonna hear that they're all on the same page, saying the same thing, because that's what we should be doing.
Everybody's gonna be on the same page.
Well, it's always an issue, right? I mean, sometimes, you know, the communication gets not quite perfectly circular, so.
We good? Thanks.
Can't wait till September. Right.
Okay, moving on to our action items. Approval of our 2017-18 budget amendment number one.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve a 2018 budget amendment one as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on this? I know that Jan kind of walked us through it a few moments ago. I think it's pretty clear to anyone. Okay, all those in favor of approving the 2017-2018 budget amendment number one, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, any opposed? Okay. Second thing, approval of employment of high school math, I guess it's certified staff. Now we have three people there. Page two.
I move the Brandon Board of Education to employ the following certified staff. Valerie Linkenship, high school math teacher. Mark Kabar, high school math teacher. Madam Martin, high school special education teacher. We didn't get both. No more of them.
It's a definite.
Okay. Support.
Okay. So what happened? I'm trying to explain what happened, I'll be up to three instead of one.
Sure.
In case someone didn't get... In case someone did get...
That's just late openings, and we have, our teams have been working on hiring some different people, and they were able to deliver around two more after the delivery of the workbook. And it was Mark Taylor that they hired late up Friday, and then Linda Martin just this afternoon. And we did them in place for the first day of school, so they were late adds, and then Valerie Winkenship was just hired recently as well.
Okay, any further discussion?
None of them are here though tonight?
No, I looked up there. I know everybody exactly, right? They're not there.
I just got a little podium.
Yes. Okay, all those, all those in favor of approving the employment of the following certified staff, Valerie, Mark, and Linda, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, welcome on board for those three individuals. Lastly, approval of our board meeting dates.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the dates added to this 2017-18 Brandon Board of Education regular meeting schedule as presented. February 12th, 2018, March 19th, 2018, April 16th, 2018, May 21st, 2018, June 18th.
Second.
Any discussion on the point? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the board meeting dates as stated, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. And lastly, the approval of our seclusion and restraint policy.
Move the Brandon Board of Education through the seclusion and restraint policy as presented.
Second. Okay, I think that was pretty clear. We heard before, we are approving this as it is written, it follows the state law. So those who are in favor of approving the seclusion and restraint policy as stated, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Lastly, any citizens input this evening? Hearing none. I want to thank all of you for your attendance. I appreciate your time and consideration. And the meeting, this is Jared.